We'll start our meeting by rising for the pledge of allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the
The flag of the United States of America.
States of America and to the Republic for which it stands.
For which it stands.
One nation.
One nation.
Under the eye.
Indivisible.
Indivisible.
Liberty and justice for all.
Wendy, you want to take the roll call?
Mike Hoffman.
Here.
Erin McBurley.
Here.
Deborah Nelson.
Here.
John Vanny.
Here.
Heather Logan.
Here.
Michelle Blythe.
Here.
Jan Swayman.
Here. Madam Mayor, I move to approve the agenda as presented.
Second?
Question?
All those in favor? Aye. Aye. Any opposed? Okay, so we'll move right into our workshop. We have some media items this evening. And our first item is the contract for approval for capital facilities needs assessment. And Kristin Garcia is going to walk us through that.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Good evening, members of council. So tonight, what I have before you is a contract with Ming Analysis to conduct a capital facility needs assessment. And the purpose of the assessment will to be to identify long-term maintenance and capital needs for city-owned buildings, to keep those buildings in safe working order over the long term. This is something that the council has been asking for, so we finally got to this point. And the end product will give us a capital facilities plan, and that's really what the council's been asking staff to produce. So that's what the needs assessment will give us at the end. The assessment will identify and prioritize deficiencies such as life safety issues, code compliance issues, energy deficiencies. It will also identify those that are immediate needs that need to be taken care of right away, things that can be in a zero to two-year time horizon, a five-year time horizon, and so on. The time horizon that they'll be doing this assessment for will be a 20-year horizon. The great thing about this is it's going to be a proactive tool that not only the maintenance department can use for their workflow and project planning, but it's going to be a great tool that finance will be able to use for our long-term finance planning and also for our biennial budgeting. A little bit about our review process. So the city did solicit proposals. We did receive a total of 12. From those 12, there were three that were identified to bring in for further discussion. So we actually held in-person interviews where the firms did a presentation, and then we had time for staff to ask questions. From there, we identified the top two and did reference checks on the top two. And then through all that process, Ming Analysis was identified as the qualified candidate. So that's why their contract is being brought forward to council. The scope of work is estimated to be about $98,809. We did include a $10,000 contingency in the contract to be used only as needed. So if their regular scope of work identifies something that may need further analysis on a particular property, we wanted to have a little bit of room in there to conduct additional work if needed. That contingency will only be used after the scope of work and fee has been identified and approved by the city. So the consultant doesn't have any discretion to use that contingency without prior approval from the city. Work is scheduled to begin upon execution of the contract. We're hoping we're going to get the work done by the end of the year unless there's any major weather issues that might delay them doing any onsite analysis. So I'm happy to answer any questions.
Okay, Jan? Jan, you're on mute. Would you mind unmuting and starting over?
Sorry. I thought I was totally on mute. No one's here at the house but me. So the things that they're going to check on are, you're saying 20 years. So are they going to take into account the growth that's going to happen in the next 20 years also?
So the purpose of this assessment is not for capacity building, if you will. It's to look at existing structures. What do we need to do over the next 20 years to maintain those facilities? We wanted to kind of start with a baseline. So with the exception of the public works facility that Jim Kelly's in, they will do a space utilization analysis for that, just mainly for workflow. Is the the space setup that makes the most sense for how employees utilize and flow through that building? But other than that, we didn't plan, at least in this phase, to do any capacity building or anything like that.
Well, I wonder if when they're doing that, and I don't know how many buildings we have, to be honest, that if there is, say, a vacant part of a building, would they include that in the report?
Unless it had, as far as how we've designed the scope of work, unless it had any major deficiencies that needed to extend the life of the building, they wouldn't be doing an analysis for underutilization or any other capacity for the facility.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Don was next, and then Deborah.
Yeah, one of the things, Kristin, that I noticed, it does not include electrical. Am I correct?
Actually, I think it does.
I do believe it did.
I thought that was, I thought I saw in there something like that was a potential add-on.
I think it might be mechanical, Don. That's what my question was.
Because if electrical wasn't on there, I was concerned there because just my background in industrial stuff, we used to have electrical surveys done of electrical equipment every year. And boy, we would really find some hotspots just from vibrational wear and tear, stuff would start coming apart. And so you'd see that heat shield before something happened down the road.
Yeah, you're absolutely, you're absolutely right, Don.
No, if you look at page three of the proposal that we used to solicit the qualifications, it's item six on that list. So we were looking at variety of things, site, exterior systems, interior, fire, life, safety issues, heating, electrical, plumbing, so kind of all the major systems. So that's on, I don't wear glasses yet, page three. I'm sorry, I might have said page three.
Take a look at it again, yeah.
But we can, just to follow up, Don, we can make sure and clarify that with the consultant once we have our kickoff meeting too, to make sure we're all on the same page.
Thanks.
Deborah, did that answer your question, or did you have additional? No, and I was trying to find, I'm having to use my iPad, which is the one I made notes on of the agenda cab, but there were three items that it said that at this time you weren't having them look at. And one was mechanical, the other might have been something electrical, and I can't remember the third. And my question was the same, is why weren't we looking at the mechanical? So I, and I can't find it scrolling through now. But there were three things, I think it was the pages that were the proposed work from the provider.
So I think what you might be referring to is on page two of Ming Analysis, their proposal, so there was additional options, there was three additional options noted. The seismic analysis, infrared thermography, and mechanical equipment and inventory. So those things, you correct, were, are not included in the scope, but that is why we are adding the 10,000 contingency in case the initial evaluation may need further analysis that would include these things.
Thank you. That, that helps. And also, I just want to say, I'm really glad that you're a part of this, Kristin, because just was a great presentation. The whole cab was very clear and well-done, so thank you.
Oh, thank you, Deborah.
Don, did you have an additional question?
Yeah, no, I think Deborah hit the one that I was looking at, the thermal imaging. Let's see, that's the one that I, we used to always do for the electrical, and that's where we would see bad connections and stuff like that without physically actually going and looking at the stuff. You could thermal image it, and you would see bad spots that were potential hazards.
So, so one of the things that they'll be doing as part of this process is not only a physical examination of the properties, but they're also requesting three years' worth of data in terms of our electricity bills, water bills. So what they'll do is, from that data, they'll identify any potential leaks. You know, is heat leaking out of the buildings, or are there any water leaks? So from that analysis, then that's where we might need to dip into the contingency to go do these other things to identify if there's a further problem. So they'll have other mechanisms, I think, throughout this process to, to get to, I think, what you're referring to, Don.
Okay. Thanks.
Any other questions for Kristin? Happy to see this work going forwards. Thank you for the presentation, Kristin.
Thank you so much.
Your next item are revisions to the Arlington Municipal Code, Chapter 3.98, regarding the property tax exemption for the Cascade Industrial Center. Markase.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of council. So back in 2015, state legislature passed Senate Bill 5761, authorizing several cities in western Washington to create tax incentives in targeted areas for new construction of industrial manufacturing facilities. In 2016, Arlington adopted ordinance 2016-008, which created the application process and identified the criteria required to be eligible to receive an ad valorem tax exemption for the improvements. This year, in 2021, the legislature modified both the language and the applicability of the property tax exemption to all cities within Washington as identified in Engrossed House Bill 1386. This ordinance that you see before you with the revisions amends Chapter 3.98 of the AMC in order to reflect those changes. The major changes that occurred are that it went from $18 an hour to $23 an hour for employees. But most of the criteria stayed the same, still need 25 employees. You need a minimum of $800,000 of improvement. And so on and so forth. There is some language change in here that during construction, that prevailing wage needs to be paid for the improvements to be constructed to employees, that they also look at women and minority-owned businesses to do that work. So there are some additional criteria in there, but the biggest changes were that this is now applicable across the state and that there are some changes to the, the family wage within the ordinance. I don't think any questions you might have?
Can I just add, not just the family wage, all the labor standards were strengthened in the new bill. And so it does require the employers also to provide health care for their employees and then to escalate the wages based on the CIP each year in order to stay in the program.
Great, thank you, Mayor.
Jan?
So Mark, what's the difference between this and the opportunity zones?
So opportunity zones are not something that the city controls. This is a controlled tax exemption. The opportunity zone allows for investors to invest in a project in order to shelter their capital gains, for the most part.
Okay.
So this is completely different.
Okay.
Mark, can you also clarify for the council which taxes are exempted?
So this is just local and county taxes. State taxes still apply.
As well as school taxes, hospital and fire taxes still apply.
Right, which fall under the state, for the most part.
Heather?
Mark, you note on the cab that only one business has applied for the tax exemption. Are you at liberty to share who that business is?
The name of the business is Procter Industries. They're on the airport. But up to date, those are the only people who've taken advantage of the exemption.
Thank you, Mark.
Jan?
Sorry, one last question. So do we know how this has worked in the other cities? I mean, I'm assuming more cities are doing this since they went statewide, but I was just curious, how many, if you know, other cities around Snoomish County that are doing?
The only other cities from the previous exemption allowance was Marysville and Lake Stephens.
Okay.
And Marysville had one that applied for that, but I don't know that they're still existing in the city, in Marysville.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Mike?
Yeah, I just, I didn't quite catch how many businesses we have that are actually taking advantage of this. Was it just one? Did I hear?
One. Correct.
Just one, okay. Yeah, I've been aware of this for a number of years. There seemed to be some confusion about this over the past several years. And I, it's nice to know that it's all cleared up now and that we have at least one taking advantage of it. And I think it's a good program.
Thank you, Mike. Any other questions? All right, thank you, Mark, for bringing that forward. And it looks like you're going to run the table the rest of the night. So the next item is the ordinance amending Title 20 of the Arlington Municipal Code to address, to address House Bill 1220. Mark's also going to walk us through that.
Thank you, Mayor. So before use in ordinance adopting zoning regulations requiring permanent supportive housing, transitional housing, emergency housing, and emergency shelters through the local planning and development regulations in response to the Engrossed Second Senate House Bill 1220. So this is an amendment to Title 20 AMC. This also amends the permissible use table to reflect zoning changes that were adopted as a part of the 2020 docket. So we did make zoning changes that never got reflected in the permissible use table in order to make sure that we covered areas where all of these elements could be applied. We had to change the, the, or at least correct the zoning changes that we had made during the 2020 docketting process. And so.
Sorry, Mark, I thought you were done.
Oh, I just wanted to know whether or not you want me to go through the changes or whether you just want to field some questions.
Well, you sent us a complete package, which I'm going to assume council read thoroughly. So council, do you want to go through the changes, or would you like to address any questions?
Questions, I suppose.
Questions, okay. Does anyone have any questions for Mark on this item?
Nope.
Okay, Mike? Mike, could you unmute yourself before you speak? Thank you.
Thank you. I do have questions on this. On the House Bill 1220, part of it, it talks about not prohibiting a traditional or transitional housing and permanent supportive housing and where residential units and hotels can be allowed, no prohibitions. And then if I, if you look at RCW 36.70A, Section 4 says, "May not prohibit the siting of sufficient number of permanent supportive housing, transitional housing, emergency housing, indoor shelter, emergency shelters, and so on." And so my question is, considering all these, you can't prohibit these things, it seems like there's that list of things that we didn't bother to read here is a series of prohibitions based upon, they can't be a quarter mile from here, they can't have more than five families there, and lots of little, lots of things that prohibit the establishment of these shelters. I won't go into all the details, but to prohibit some of these shelters from going in these locations where the, the laws state that they can't prohibit. So I get, my question is, how can we have all these exceptions and prohibitions under these, of those conditions and still be in compliance with these, with this House Bill 1220 and the RCW 36 that I mentioned earlier? It just, it's me, it's very confusing to know that we have prohibitions and yet we seem to be violating those prohibitions. We're not complying with them. So I just want to have an explanation of that.
So we did not prohibit them in the areas that allow for residential uses. They are allowed there, but there, we do have the ability to limit the size of that to the underlying zoning requirement. So if you're in, let's say, Old Town Residential District, you have one dwelling unit per lot because of the zoning. So you could have one living unit within that one block, or within that one parcel within Old Town. So we are allowing it to go into zones, but we do have the ability to say we don't want them any closer than X amount of feet, or in this instance, a mile. And it also allows you to limit the size of the family or the maximum amount of occupants within the facility. So we do allow for it. We're not prohibiting that in the zoning. But we do have expectations about how many of these can be placed within our city and what the proximity is to each other.
Do we have an inventory of existing and projected housing needs of these shelters? I believe we're supposed to have an inventory of the need before we start prohibiting or regulating where they go. Do we have such an inventory?
Well, we have an inventory of what we have existing in housing stock. We don't have a specific inventory of where transitional housing is, but you know, if that's something that council is, is interested in knowing, we can go back through and identify where transitional housing exists. And we don't have emergency housing or shelters in place right now, so there is no inventory that could be provided, so.
That could be a problem, because I believe we're supposed to have such an inventory. I mean, you're more aware of these things than I am, but from what I've read here, it looks like we should have such an inventory before we start limiting such things. So that's my concern.
I'll go back through that, Mike. I just know that this was just adopted this year. So for them to require an inventory of something that was adopted would be pretty onerous on the cities. But I'll go back through that and look up what you're referencing. If you've got a section to reference for me, that'd be great.
Yeah, I do. RCW 36.70A. Point 070.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any more questions, Mike?
That's it.
Okay, great, thank you. Anybody else have any questions for Mark on this? All right, thank you, Mark. The next item up is a dedication of Right-Away for 173rd Place Northeast. Mark's also going to take us through that.
All right, thank you, Madam Mayor. So this is a dedication of Right-Away. I hope I'm on the right one here. Hang on a second. This was in, as a part of the development of a mixed-use building, called the Van Louven Building is what the project was called. This is on 173rd. So if you look at the illustrative map to this, it looks a little funny simply because there's just this little portion of Right-Away in front of the project. But that's because 173rd actually ends at a cul-de-sac. And so the cul-de-sac is, was, the Right-Away was previously dedicated on this property to accommodate for the cul-de-sac. The remainder of the property, because we had parking as part of the project required for out on the street, we required a dedication of Right-Away for that to occur. So that's what that is delineating.
Thank you. Does anybody have any questions for Mark on the dedication of the Right-Away? 173rd Place Northeast? Okay, so the next item is the dedication of Right-Away for Smokey Point Boulevard. Mark?
So another dedication of Right-Away, which was brought upon by development. This is a mixed-use project. It was the affinity, so the affinity apartments were built on the far eastern portion of this property. And Magnolia, the memory care facility, was built on the on the south, or western portion of the property. So they were required to do the frontage improvements on Smokey Point Boulevard. So this is a dedication of that Right-Away, which contains those frontage improvements that were constructed as part of this project.
When you say frontage improvements, is that like shrubbery and trees, or what?
No, this was actually, this incorporated the design that we've been utilizing for Smokey Point Boulevard and 204th. This is actually the drop lane with the on-street parking out in front. And so if you drive by, you'll see that the drop lane comes off of there, and then there's the on-street parking, which will be there in order to serve the retail commercial portion of this project.
So, okay, I'm looking at this now, and it isn't a frontage on Smokey Point Boulevard, then?
Yes, if you go to the illustrative map, Jan?
Yeah, I'm looking at it, yeah.
So that is along, that green area is along the frontage of Smokey Point Boulevard. That's where the drop lane and the on-street parking has been constructed.
So I guess in my mind, what confused me was you said on-street parking. We won't have on-street parking on Smokey Point Boulevard, will we?
Yes.
Oh.
There'll be on-street parking on the entire corridor.
Oh.
Once the improvements are done.
Oh, okay. Can't quite visualize that.
Yeah, so it's back-end parking, because that drop lane will serve as both transit and the bike lane.
Oh, okay.
Great. Any other questions for Mark on that?
No.
Okay. So we'll move on to the next item, which is the property acquisition for Smokey Point Park Space.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So from previous conversations, I was given direction to go out and have an appraisal done of the property. The, for the Smokey Point Community Church, that has been conducted. And so you can see where the comparables were in the appraisal itself, and then I just kind of summarized it here, pardon me, in the cab. So the comparables in the area went, ranged from anywhere from $10.12 per square foot to $13.74 per square foot, with the subject property coming in at $11.25 per square foot. And so the appraisal has been sent to Smokey Point Community Church. They are reviewing it. They are doing their own independent appraisal for the property. And so at this point, I may have not approached them with a formal offer for the property. I'm waiting for their appraisal to be done prior to having that discussion and making that offer.
Carolyn?
Yeah, I was wondering, it looked like the range was $10.12 to $13.74. What, what is that, the high, high amount, what does that equate to in, you know, dollars, total dollars?
Let me look at, because I don't know what the property size was for that.
Oh, I was just wondering, you know, like if it came in higher, on the high end of what, what we have here, how much that would really be?
Looks like it's 1.8 acres on the map, Mark.
Oh, you mean with, with this project?
Yeah, what's, you know, like, for, we're saying $11.25 per square foot, and then that equates to 880, whatever. How, how much is 13.74 come out to? I just thought you might know. I don't mean to.
I just gave us an answer and said, could you put that back up, Steve? $1,078,000?
Okay.
Oh.
It should be in your chat. I can't, I don't have access.
It's there.
So that could be a couple hundred thousand more, is that? Maybe 150?
Yes.
Okay, I was just curious, you know, if the church goes out and gets an estimate, you know, are they?
It was, it was $1,086,440.
Okay. So, you know, like, if they came out on the high end, that could be the, what they would ask for.
Yeah, depending what their comps came back and what was agreed upon on a, on a sale price, correct?
Okay, thank you.
Michelle? Michelle?
Mark, you, we we would expect it to come in that same range. Um, we wouldn't expect it to come back anything higher um than our high end of the range, would you?
Only if there, only would it come in higher if there were other properties that have sold recently since this was done that they captured to show what the the comparables were.
Oh, all right, thank you.
Deborah, and then Jan.
Um, so as I read through this and I'm just thinking, after they do their due diligence and come back, um, what funds do we have available to us to purchase this? I'm I'm thinking that we have the park mitigation funds. Do you know how much is in there that could be used towards this? Because that's a big bucket, and we have different parks to take care of. Um, it's a capital facilities, correct, purchasing this, so? And then are there grants available that we could do some matching type of things with to either purchase or fund fund building this park?
Anticipation of your questions about what, where, if we had the funds to purchase this, I asked Paul to do a little bit of research, so I'm going to turn it over to Paul to answer that question about funding.
Yeah, so we do the park, the Parks Mitigation Fund has actually grown quite a bit since we talked about this uh project initially, just because we've had so much development in the city. So we got about two point four million in that fund right now. Um, we also looked at the REIT fund because our our, of course, with uh real estate booming right now, our REIT fund is is also been um growing. So we would have some money in there. Potentially, we could split it, you know, uh some arrangement like splitting the the purchase between a REIT fund and the Parks Mitigation Fund, that would leave us some money in Parks Mitigation. Um, for exactly what you're talking about, Deborah, is that we're going to want to develop this park, so we're going to need match when grant opportunities come up. Potentially, we could get some grant money to help the development of this. Um, and and our other park needs, because we will have other things that'll come up that that need attention. Uh, right now, we're, the REIT funding primarily been using it for debt service, so our Graffstra um park payments and uh the Olympic Avenue payments come out of REIT. Um, so when you see that in your financial report, you'll see that the balance is fairly high, but we're projecting out those um debt service payments that need to come out of that funding. But having said that, like I said, there's still some residual in there that we could use to to maybe take half and half or something to cover this purchase.
We're also talking about um ways we put our legislative agenda together for this year of funding the civic space portion of the park, um asking for capital um funds from Washington to do that. So this neighborhood fits the demographics of places they're looking to do investment for underserved neighborhoods, so at least building out the civic space in there with that.
Marilyn? Oh, oh, sorry.
After Deborah.
Go ahead. I thought you were done.
Um, well, just along that same line, I'm thinking, thinking of our comp plan. Um, and I know we're, you know, having the people looking at our, all of our park system, but just the importance of the location of this for the equity of that area too. So um, to me, that's a strong factor as we continue forward with this, but thank you.
Thank you. I agree. Marilyn?
Yeah, we also will have, um, once we get the um the public space with the house at York property on the market, we, that money will go towards um park as well. So whatever that is will help out, and then we'll be having the um results from the uh parks uh master plan too, to plan for future things and and um, you know, maintenance of our existing parks. So I think we're in good shape.
Well, in better shape than we were. Mark, do you have any idea when the church will complete their appraisal?
I last communicated with the pastor a couple of weeks ago. They were, they were looking for um affirmative reconductor appraisal. I would see that probably happening uh in the next month or so.
Okay. So other than the discussion we had this evening, will you be bringing this back to council next week? Are you going to wait until? Could you give us a, an understanding of what the process is going to be?
Um, I would, I I'll bring it back if I have additional information. I don't know that I have anything else to share um with council regarding this next week. But um I will reach out to them again to see whether or not they have an estimated time for their appraisal to be completed.
It would be normal practice that we bring a purchase-sale agreement forward to council for review once, once we have a dollar figure. I've asked Mark that if, once we get that, that to let the church know, we'd like to not um close on this till after the first of the year, although we have this funding uh on our books and in these funds, we don't, we don't have this cash um on hand, so we'll have to we'll have to plan for that, to have the cash available.
Hey, Deborah?
Do we need to give you a nod of yes to continue with this, or, I mean, we told you to do that pretty much at the retreat. So I was just curious if you need any more affirmation from this council to continue. I know that any sale agreement would come to us, you know, I'm, I have no fear of that happening, but I didn't know if you needed anymore to go further or anything like that tonight, or that's just FYI.
I'm continuing with due diligence on it. I, like I said, I'm just waiting for their appraisal to be done before uh we offer into a purchase-sale agreement to move forward. So um as soon as they're done with their appraisal, I'll inform you as to what their appraisal says and provide that to you. And then we'll have to uh get a new nod from council in order to move forward with the purchase and sale agreement.
Mark, if I can be so bold as to suggest when it's ready to come back to council for action, if you work with Paul and Kristen and put together a a finance plan of where the funds would come from, that would give council the fullest look before they make a decision.
That's perfect.
Jan has a question.
Uh, yes, Marilyn brought up the uh property next to the York Park, and I know that we definitely said that the money would go toward a park at Smokey Point, whether that's for the sale or whether that's for actually putting the park together. Uh, and I know in order to actually put it back on the market, that the zoning needs to be changed from public private property to uh the overlay, which is uh a medium density, if I'm not mistaken. And, yeah, yeah, I haven't got Armand down to a science yet. Uh, but, so my question then is uh with us moving forward with this, when can we get uh that back on the docket uh so that we can vote again on the rezone?
Our, our, our docket is annual, so Mark puts that together in January. It usually comes to council preliminary uh the end of January, first part of February, and then uh his staff goes through the docketing process, and then, of course, they, that comes back to you throughout the year for uh your final consideration. So, long story short, it'll be next year.
So, do we need to request that it go on the docket? Who does that?
Yeah, somebody has to, it it can be city initiated, uh city initiated, which is what it has been in the past.
So you will see that coming out on the docket next year, Jan. The city will once again initiate that zoning change.
Okay, excellent. Thank you.
You're welcome.
So am I taking this as a request from council right now to put it on, place it on the docket for twenty twenty-one?
Yeah.
I see a lot of nods.
And I see a lot of shaking heads.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
A majority of shaking heads, so. Hey, any other questions on Mark's presentation? Mark, I thank you for bringing it forward. I know we're all kind of anxious to see it so we could kind of figure out the next steps, but we won't have it on the agenda next week unless the appraisal somehow miraculously comes in and we confirm that out. But appreciate you bringing the information forward.
Correct. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark.
All right, do we have any administrative report this evening, Paul?
Nothing else this evening. Thank you.
And I just have one, as we're talking about parks. Um, we partner up with the county every year to use some of their REIT funds for our park improvements, and we just finished up the improvements on Evans Field, which will be touring with the county tomorrow. And for their budget for next year, we have asked for an allocation of fifty thousand dollars to do the shelter um that's needed at Haller Park. So um we had put some funds aside for that. Between the two of us, we could get that completed next year. So that's our request to the county for park improvements for this year. Are there any comments from council members this evening? Deborah?
Um, I just want to say that kind of a follow-up to, I think it was Dawn who brought this up at the police retreat as we were talking about um traffic safety in downtown um Arlington here. And today, we were driving home from Boise and went through Cleelum to stop for lunch, and they had a lovely big speeding s- or, yeah, speed sign, or, you know, you are going this speed um right above the actual telling you what your speed was supposed to be and big flashing lights. It couldn't miss it. So um I would just like to, I know you talked to Paul about that we were going to go forward to get some signs, so I would love to see some of those while I was gone this last weekend. My neighbors were texting me because they're, somebody ran the stop sign here on Fifth, coming down from the schools and crashed into another car. To be honest, I was glad it was a car and not a pedestrian because kids walk on this road all the time. So um anyway, it was just, I could tell cars were slowing down when they saw that sign and really behaving themselves well going through Cleelum. So just an encouragement to continue on with that project for the city of Arlington and our safety.
And it is moving forward, so that Jim is researching some of those signs. We wanted to see if uh what you're saying, there, there is some models available that are a little bit more uh bright than the ones we had. So we, Jim was looking into that. Um, Jonathan has picked out a radar trailer off state bid, so we're, we're moving forward with that piece too. And I just sent uh the Ryan and Jim some more information today on some uh stop signs that are lighted with LED lights, um so that we could research that and maybe uh test that out on some of the intersections we're having more problems with.
Well, and I just see on my city email this evening that there's another letter from one of my neighbors um speaking about the issues here in downtown Arlington, so it's a concern. Thank you.
I forwarded that email to the chief, and I'll respond to it tomorrow.
Excellent. Thank you.
Thanks, Deborah. Any other comments, council members? Jan?
Uh, if I can add to what Deborah says, you know, I'm on the uh project selection committee at PSRC for the grants. And um one of the things we discussed, and I discussed today actually with the county that we will discuss on Thursday, is adding additional criteria for those grants that include more safety and more things to do to uh impact speeding on the roadways. So uh as we look forward, and I'm thrilled to hear that we are going to be doing things because when we write those grants, we will already have those things in place, but they will be requirements for the federal and state uh transportation monies.
Thank you, Jan. Anyone else? Michael? Um unmute yourself first.
Thank you. Yeah, I'd like to run something by the council here that uh, this is October eleventh, and it's traditionally recognized as Columbus Day. And now it's also the Indigenous Peoples' Day. And so I think we should do something with that, and so I'm proposing, I'd like to have the council respond if they have anything to respond. Uh, I propose that from now on, the Arlington City Council begin its meetings with both the Pledge of Allegiance, as we have always done, and a statement of land acknowledgement. And a land acknowledgement shares a commitment to honoring the native communities, educates all within the community in local history, and can demonstrate a sustained commitment to building authentic community relationships to advance equity for all. By honoring those who inhabited the land before us, we can help build an understanding around the history of our land and its indigenous peoples as well as set the tone for honoring all people who have been historically marginalized or underserved. The last two points I just, I just read here came from Dr. Chris Sweeting, our Arlington School District Superintendent. So I have a statement, a land acknowledgement statement. If the council's interested in listening to that tonight, I'd be happy to read it. If not, perhaps we could put it on an agenda item for uh a future meeting and discuss doing such a thing. And I would highly recommend that we do so.
All right, Michelle?
Mike, does um, does Everett, I I feel like somebody is doing that right now. Is there some other councils that are doing that? Or or were they just talking about it?
Yeah, there is, there are many councils that are doing this these days. I I can't give you a big list of them. I know the Arlington School District is doing that in, at their school board meetings. I know that for a fact. I do think Everett was entertaining the idea. I don't know if they, if they actually are starting to do that as of right now, but it is something that's becoming more and more commonplace.
I'd be interested in talking about it in the future or however you want to handle it.
I'd be interested if you could send your sample statement around to all the council so they can read it before we have discussion on it. I think that'd be good.
Yes, I can certainly do that.
And if you have problems, you can just forward it to Paul or I, and we'll, we'll send it to the whole council.
Thank you.
Thank you. Did I see another hand up there, Marilyn?
I get it in the picture there. Um, so are you suggesting that when we do the Pledge of Allegiance, then uh immediately following that, we read some statement that you have prepared?
Yes, I am, I am suggesting that. Uh, I'm not, I don't, you know, where, where it sits on the agenda. Uh, I'm, I'm, you know, certainly flexible. It could be anywhere. But I'd suggest that, yes, that would be a good place for it to begin with our usual pledge of allegiance, like we always do. And then this only takes just, you know, thirty seconds. I mean, I can read it right now if you'd like to listen to it.
No, really, but are you saying that every meeting we're going, you would propose that we do this?
Well, perhaps just at our formal meetings, maybe not, not the workshops. That's just a suggestion. Yeah, it could be done at every meeting, but certainly on at our regular formal meeting where we, where we do state the Pledge of Allegiance and uh maybe follow that. But we also say the pledge at our workshops, so I don't think it would be inappropriate to do it at those as well. That's just my opinion on it, but I think it should be done in in connection or along with our uh our Pledge of Allegiance.
I totally disagree with this. I I don't agree with this at all. I think if you want to recognize any particular group, that that would be done separately somehow, but not in conjunction with the Pledge of Allegiance. I I totally am opposed to this.
I agree with Marilyn.
I would, I would like it to be sent to us, Mike, along with um the, what you're saying, your reasoning. I I'm interested in reading it and thinking about it, doing a little research. I guess too what I'm thinking is um, I would be curious to know what our neighboring tribes feel about it, if if it would be honoring to our local indigenous people.
Yes, it would be. I've been in contact with the Siloanis tribe on this.
Well, I would like a statement maybe from them, if Paul or the mayor, who tend to work closely with them. Um, just a formal statement. So I'd like a little bit of just homework done, you know, for all of us to know, so we can have an educated discussion. So I'm not going to say I'm against it. I intend to lean towards it, but I really would like some information. And thank you for bringing it up.
Yeah, I consider there's a lot of information out there. There's a lot of boards and commissions I'm on that are currently doing it. Happy to forward you guys some reading materials. I think there was even commentary in the Everett Herald today about land acknowledgements. So I think there's pro and con points being made in writing on both sides, and I would um really encourage the council to seek that information um and take a look through it and have a qualified discussion about it. Did I see another hand up somewhere?
Well, it was me, but I, you kind of covered it in the Everett Herald, um because I've heard about that too, um I guess more recently. Um, that I'm deferring. that different councils or maybe commissions are doing that. I'm not sure. Only thing I don't know, like Mike, is I don't know when they're doing it in their meeting agenda, so that might be something, you know, if you, if you knew just what a few people are doing, that would be interesting.
So I'll tell you, it typically happens at the very beginning of a meeting, you know, as an acknowledgement, before you go into your business of the meeting. For the boards and commissions that I sit on, that's where it's done.
Hmm, okay.
Marilyn, I saw your hand up.
Well, I'm just wondering, I, again, I'm totally opposed to this, but does it open the door for other groups or entities to be included? So we do the Pledge of Allegiance, then we do the indigenous people and, you know, whoever else, and then you spend your whole meeting recognizing all these people, when you could do it in a other, other manner. I'm not saying I don't recognize these people, I'm saying the Pledge of Allegiance to the United States of America is one, that, that's us and it should not be, it should just be that. It shouldn't be anything else. You can do that at other times, but our Pledge of Allegiance is exactly what it is and it shouldn't be included in other things.
All right, thank you. If I don't mind, council, just to keep us on track, this is time for council comments and so Mike brought something forward.
Okay.
And I will work with him to, obviously the council needs to have further discussion on this and so we'll work on bringing that back in a workshop format where we can have that discussion. Does that sound okay to everybody? Just trying to keep us on track. Okay, good. Thank you, Mike. Any other comments? I don't mean to cut off comments, I just want to make sure everybody gets a chance to put their comments out this evening. You have a comment? All right, we didn't have any members of the public that wish to speak to us this evening. And let's just take a quick look at the agenda for what could possibly go on consent agenda for next week. I'm thinking the Right-Aways, items number four and five. Go on the consent agendas, everybody who disagrees with that? No? And unless we have further information, we won't be bringing item six back next week for the Smokey Point property purchase. I think that concludes, we don't have an executive session this evening.
Okay, Madam Mayor, I move to adjourn.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned. Good night, everyone.